Meeting to order, Pudge of Allegiance, Councilmember Davidson.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Mayor Larky?
Here.
Councilmember White?
Here.
Councilmember Thompson?
Here.
Councilmember Davidson?
Here.
Councilmember Pryon?
Here.
Councilmember Lawson?
Here.
Councilmember Richardson?
Here.
Councilmember McCallum?
Here.
Councilmember Johnson?
Here.
We have a quorum. At this time, I want to take a moment of silence for firefighter Graham Hoffman, who was killed in the line of duty this week and a former employee of us. Public hearing, the city belt will now hold a public hearing on petition to establishment of the Peculiar Drive Community Improvement District.
Just ask, just ask if there are interested parties that would like to be heard regarding the CID?
Any interested parties that want to speak on behalf of the Peculiar Drive Community Improvement District, come to the microphone and state your name and address. Again, one more time, anybody that wants to speak on behalf of the Peculiar Drive Community Improvement District, come to the microphone and state your name and address. Hearing and seeing none, we'll move on. Personal appearances, none. Unfinished business one, motion approved in the final reading of Bill twenty twenty-five dash eighteen.
An ordinance amending chapter three intoxicating liquor of the code of ordinances to align with new licensing processes and capabilities and improve the effectiveness of the code.
Present. Motion and second. Any discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Councilmember Lawson?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
White?
Aye.
Richardson?
Aye.
Davidson?
Yes.
Pryon?
Aye.
McCallum?
Aye.
Mayor Larky?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Motion passes. Two, motion approved in the final reading of Bill twenty twenty-five dash nineteen.
An ordinance amending chapter six, business licenses and regulations, and appendix A, schedule of fees and charges of the code of ordinances to align with new licensing processes and capabilities and improve the effectiveness of the code.
Present.
Second.
Motion and second. Any discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Councilmember Pryon?
Aye.
Davidson?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
White?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
McCallum?
Aye.
Lawson?
Aye.
Mayor Larky?
Yes.
Richardson?
Aye.
Motion passes. Motion approved in the final reading of Bill twenty twenty-five dash twenty.
An ordinance amending sections one dash five, eighteen dash eight, and twenty dash five, and chapter forty of the Unified Development Code to modify existing regulations and adopt new regulations related to land uses, special use provisions and standards, uses subject to conditions, land use definitions, North Scott corridor overlay district, and preliminary and final development plans to improve the effectiveness of the code.
Present.
Second.
Motion and second. Any discussion? Go ahead.
Just a quick question. Is the, if, assuming we approve this, when does it go in effect? Is it immediately? Yes, it would be in effect immediately. Okay.
Go ahead.
I just have one comment. I feel like having, the codes should be uniform for the whole city. I don't understand why North Scott would have less restrictions than the rest. It's just...
I think when we made those changes that are in the packet this evening, that was done based on the existing conditions. You know, a lot of the site constraints and things like that on North Scott, you have smaller lots, older building stock, and so we're trying to help allow those businesses and property owners to make those improvements at a cost, in a cost-effective manner for them. We're not applying the standard that we necessarily would to new greenfield development that generally has more financial capabilities of making those kinds of improvements.
Go ahead.
Wasn't the original North Scott corridor more restrictive than...
Yes, there were a number of items that, after looking more deeply at the overlay and comparing it to our standards, especially on the building materials, the standards were more restrictive than what they would, what we have applied elsewhere in the city.
So this is putting it more closer to what we normally do?
You're not on.
Yes, it does revert back to the base code for most items, but there are a few exceptions related to building materials. Again, it's trying to take into consideration the existing context of the corridor.
Go ahead.
So in effect, it's less stringent than it was, more, overall?
It is less stringent than what it currently is, and on some items, it's less stringent than what the citywide code is.
Okay.
For a few items.
That's how I understood it. I just wanted to make sure.
Anybody else? Hearing none, roll call.
Mayor Larky?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Aye.
Pryon?
Aye.
White?
Aye.
Richardson?
Aye.
McCallum?
Aye.
Lawson?
Aye.
Thompson?
Yes.
Davidson?
No.
Motion passes. Motion approved in the final reading of Bill twenty twenty-five dash twenty-one.
An ordinance approving a TIPS hotline contract with the Kansas City Metropolitan Crime Commission.
Present.
Second.
Motion and second. Any discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Councilmember Richardson?
Aye.
Thompson?
Yes.
Pryon?
Aye.
Davidson?
Yes.
Johnson?
Aye.
White?
Aye.
Lawson?
Aye.
McCallum?
Aye.
Mayor Larky?
Aye, motion carries. Five, motion approved in the final reading of Bill twenty twenty-five dash twenty-two.
An ordinance authorizing the appropriation and revision of the city of Belton fiscal year twenty twenty-five adopted city budget for the purpose of amending the solid waste fund.
Present.
Second.
Motion and second. Any discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Councilmember Pryon?
Aye.
Davidson?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Johnson?
Aye.
McCallum?
Aye.
Lawson?
Aye.
Mayor Larky?
Yes.
Richardson?
Aye.
Motion passes. H, new business one, motion approved in the first reading of Bill twenty twenty-five dash twenty-three.
An ordinance approving the vacation of all rights of way and easements on a three-point-five-three-nine more or less acre property located at the southwest corner of Interstate forty-nine and fifty-eight highway in the city of Belton, Missouri.
Present.
Second.
Motion and second. You're up, sir.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Before you this evening is a request for the vacation of right-of-way and easements on the former commuter lot property at the southwest corner of I forty-nine and fifty-eight highway. The vacation includes the entire three-point-five-four acre parcel that is currently right-of-way that was transferred from Modop to the city in twenty twenty-three. All needed right-of-way and easements will be dedicated with the final plat, which is also on the agenda this evening. The planning commission held a public hearing for this vacation at their meeting last night, of which no one spoke in favor or in opposition to the request. The planning commission recommended unanimous approval of the vacation, and staff also recommends approval of the vacation with one condition. If there are no unanswered questions or concerns this evening, staff is requesting both readings this evening to allow the development of Lot One to proceed.
Go ahead.
I'll wait, I'll wait for my question for when we get to, I'll wait.
Anybody else have any questions? Go ahead. All right. No other questions, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Motion for a second.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for a second reading. Any discussion on the motion?
So regarding the second reading, is this because the developer is ready to, you know, for lack of a better term, move dirt immediately?
Yes, so we have all, we've reviewed all the permits for both the site and the building permits for Lot One, and those are pretty much ready to go.
Okay.
Anybody else? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Motion approved the final reading of Bill twenty twenty-five dash twenty-three.
An ordinance approving the vacation of all rights of way and easements on a three-point-five-three-nine more or less acre property located at the southwest corner of Interstate forty-nine and fifty-eight highway in the city of Belton, Missouri.
Present.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Councilmember Lawson?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
White?
Yes.
Richardson?
Aye.
Davidson?
Yes.
Pryon?
Yes.
McCallum?
Aye.
Mayor Larky?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Motion passes. Item two, motion approved in the first reading of Bill twenty twenty-five dash twenty-four.
An ordinance approving a final plat for Belton Olive Garden, a two-lot commercial plat on three-point-nine-one more or less acres located at the southwest corner of Interstate forty-nine and fifty-eight highway in the city of Belton, Missouri.
Present.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. You're up again.
Yep, thank you, Mayor and Council. This is a request for a final plat for the Belton Olive Garden plat, which is a two-lot commercial plat covering three-point-nine-one acres. The plat includes the former three-point-five-four acre commuter lot and an additional point-three-two acres at the northwest corner of the plat that will be added into Lot One. Dedication of right-of-way and easements for existing and future improvements have been accommodated by this plat. However, as there are several public improvements that will be made with the development of Lot One, a condition has been added that should any additional easements be needed, that they be approved and recorded by separate document prior to occupancy of the lot. The planning commission reviewed the final plat at their meeting last night and recommended unanimous approval. Staff also recommends approval with four conditions, and like with the vacation, if there's no unanswered questions or concerns, we do request both readings this evening.
Any questions? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Motion for a second.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for a second reading. Any discussion? Go ahead.
This isn't a discussion. At this point, it's just a comment, which is, the reason we're going to move forward is the same as the one I just presented, and that is because they are ready to, to move dirt on this. Yes.
Because I want breadsticks by the end of May.
You know what? That's, that's a good question, actually. On, thank you for bringing that up. Is, do we have an expected timeline? Because, you know, we hear that a lot. I don't...
Garrett's back there.
Developer is here. And look, I, I understand my question is speculative. I understand that there's, this is a guesstimation, but I'd still love to hear it.
A year probably for, I mean, there's, as you guys know, there's a lot of dirt to be moved to raise the site, and then they have to build a pretty large, expensive building. So it's going to be, I mean, I would say this time next year, a little bit later probably, but they want to hit this door to be open in their next, before the end of their next fiscal year. So they have, they have a timeline as well as we have one required by them. So we're ready to go.
Gotcha. Is that fiscal timeline different than a regular calendar year?
It's, yeah, whatever it is, I can't remember the exact date, but...
No, that's fine.
How about our timeline's quicker than theirs?
Yeah, I'm sure it is.
Yeah, could you just let them know I meant this May?
Yeah.
Go ahead.
So in other words, never fear, because Olive Garden will be here.
That's the plan.
In about thirty seconds. Anybody else? I forget where we're at.
We're approving the second.
All right. Anybody else? Roll call, please.
No.
We're approving the second.
Oh, approving the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Motion approved in the final reading of Bill twenty twenty-five dash twenty-four.
An ordinance approving a final plat for Belton Olive Garden, a two-lot commercial plat on three-point-nine-one more or less acres located at the southwest corner of Interstate forty-nine and fifty-eight highway in the city of Belton, Missouri.
Present.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any more discussion? Roll call, please.
Mayor Larky?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Aye.
Pryon?
Aye.
White?
Here. Oh, aye.
Richardson?
Aye.
McCallum?
Aye.
Lawson?
Aye.
Thompson?
Yes.
Davidson?
Yes.
Motion passes. Three, motion approved in the first reading of Bill twenty twenty-five dash twenty-five.
An ordinance approving the petition for and establishing the Peculiar Drive Community Improvement District and approving a cooperative agreement among the city of Belton, Missouri, and Peculiar Drive Community Improvement District and Belton Fifty-Eight Chopper LLC.
Present.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. You're up.
Thank you, Mayor and Council members. This item is the creation and approval of the petition establishing the Peculiar Drive Community Improvement District and approving the cooperative agreement with the developer for the property that the council just approved. As part of the development process, the developer undertook a blight study due to the poor condition of the site or the former park and ride and the lack of utilities and other certain items that created hurdles for the development. In fall of twenty twenty-four, using the blight study, the council did make a determination of blight on the site that qualified it for certain incentive tools that could be used on the development site. The petition in front of the council will establish a community improvement district over the property that will collect an additional one percent of sales tax from all future sales at the restaurants and, or to restaurants, to reimburse the developer for those public improvements. The reimbursable improvements include things such as the public sewer, water, stormwater, and parking lot improvements across the entire site. The cooperative agreement also outlines the duties and obligations of the city, the CID, and the developer regarding the construction of public improvements and the overall development in general. The city will reimburse the developer up to no more than one million dollars over the life of the CID through the city's one percent general fund sales tax collected as part of the development. The revenue from this reimbursement is only to be allocated from future sales within the development itself. The cooperative agreement and sales tax reimbursement will not affect the city's collection of other sales tax, such as the public safety sales tax, the EMS fire sales tax, capital improvement, et cetera. If the developer fails to develop the second pad site, the city can and will withhold up to a million dollars within that reimbursement as outlined in the agreement. I'm happy to answer any questions about the agreement. That is in front of council. Sarah Granoff from Gilmore and Bell is also here. She was instrumental in helping draft this agreement between us and the developer. Happy to answer any questions.
Who's first? Go ahead.
No, I'm leaving him go.
Wow.
All right, we're good. Oh, go ahead.
I was just going to mention that, asked about the Olive Garden, this, creation of the CID and STRA, this, this development agreement is, is a key component toward getting that underway, so.
And staff is asking for a second read on these items. We, we want breadsticks just as bad.
You want breadsticks, so, yeah. Anybody else? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Motion for a second.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for a second reading. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Motion approved in the second reading of Bill twenty twenty-five dash twenty-five.
An ordinance approving the petition for and establishing the Peculiar Drive Community Improvement District and approving a cooperative agreement among the city of Belton, Missouri, the Peculiar Drive Community Improvement District, and Belton Fifty-Eight Chopper LLC.
Present.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any more discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Councilmember Richardson?
Aye.
Thompson?
Yes.
Pryon?
Aye.
Davidson?
Yes.
Johnson?
Aye.
White?
Aye.
Lawson?
Aye.
McCallum?
Aye.
Mayor Larky?
Yes. Motion passes. You have an Olive Garden.
I'm pleased to put an Olive Garden.
Four, motion approved in resolution twenty twenty-five dash thirty-four.
A resolution authorizing and approving the city of Belton, Missouri through its emergency management department to sponsor and support the Belton Community Emergency Response Team program.
Present.
Second.
Any discussion? The mayor stepped out. Oh.
Do I give, do I, okay. It's only my third time, so, I don't know. I was like, all right.
I'm not used to him leaving.
Yeah, no, thank you. I'm here to present a resolution to formally restructure the group that is currently known as our FEMA volunteers to a Belton Community Emergency Response Team, or CERT. This is a program that's nationally recognized by FEMA. It will train residents in basic disaster response skills using their model, and this will allow us to formalize our volunteer efforts, which then leads us to enhancing preparedness, building stronger ties between the community and first responders, and improving our local response capacity. There's several other cities around us that have seen great success with similar programs, and we're ready to implement one in Belton. So I'm happy to answer any questions.
Go ahead.
Go ahead.
Do you need council representation for that council?
I think HR, yeah, I mean, if you want to.
I'd like to volunteer.
You can be volunteers, I guess.
Especially if I can get red and blue lights for my buggy.
That's a no.
I don't, I don't think, yeah.
That was a serious ask, though. I would like to be on it if you need one.
Nope, thank you.
How will it change the structure of the current setup with the volunteers?
The current volunteer structure will transition slightly to go underneath the way FEMA, CERT has their titles. So as in like director, captain, member, they have a program manager and then volunteers. So the current group of volunteers, we've had discussions about that transition and what that would look like with their current roles already, and we've talked about those several times.
Go ahead.
Would you serve as the CERT program coordinator?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, yeah.
Go ahead.
This, I'm not sure if this is a question directly for you, but do we have, how do we get applicants for our volunteers besides, you know, Mr. Pryon?
I've not received one in, since I've been in my position, so I'm not sure what the process was previously. I don't know if Chief Lyons got any that he could talk to through.
Since I've been here in twenty twenty-one, every once in a while, someone would call, but we weren't taking applications because of the structure, and I think it hasn't been worked out in regards to HR, whether it be a full application, what that process would look like with background, but that's something that'd have to be worked out with HR.
Is this, I guess I'm asking, because I'm curious, is this similar to our other boards where we keep applications on file and that kind of thing, or is this different and separate?
I believe it'll be different, separate, different. There will be discussions kind of how to formalize that application process as well. I know the current volunteers do go through the city background check, but there will be additional training requirements and things that would be implemented under this CERT program.
Gotcha. I guess I, we can take this offline, but I would be curious to know once that, once that's solidified, kind of what that looks like, just so I have that knowledge in case somebody reaches out.
Yeah, and also this process would, there would be a lot of sharing of the information on social media, posting it at events, talking about the program to get volunteers within our community, which would then also highlight kind of the process that they would need to take to become members of the group.
Perfect, and I had no doubt that you would advertise it, but I just wanted to bring that up, so thank you.
Go ahead.
Is there a cost for the training that the volunteers would do?
No, and right now, even to implement the program, there's no initial costs, or they're very minimal initial costs, and the training materials or materials needed as far as like gear, uniforms, has already been factored into our existing budget. The basic CERT training is free of cost. We do have several local trainers, and we're always getting new trainers within fire departments, police departments, who have interest to help provide those trainings, so.
Thank you very much.
Go ahead.
Just curious, how many volunteers do you currently have? Do you know?
Eight. We did have nine. Unfortunately, we had one of our volunteers pass away last week, following a battle with cancer. So we're, we had nine, and we have eight now.
Anybody else? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Excuse me. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Five, motion approved in resolution twenty twenty-five dash thirty-five.
A resolution approving a first amendment to option and lease agreement between the city of Belton, Missouri and New Singular Wireless PCS LLC, and authorizing the execution of the same on behalf of the city.
Present.
Second.
Motion and second. You're up.
This is an agreement between us and AT&amp;T. AT&amp;T, at some point, bought Singular Wireless, and so it's really a negotiation between us and AT&amp;T to have their equipment on the water tower that's down here downtown. It was an agreement that was previous that we had. It was renegotiated by our city attorney, and so if you have specific green, questions about the agreement, I would let him answer all those for you.
Any questions? Free cell phones for city staff?
Unfortunately, we can't request that under Missouri law. We're prohibited from doing it. But I, I assume the negotiation updated the monies involved? Yes, the major change in this new amendment is the increase in the monthly rental amount, and then the fact that the, there's a five percent increase or three percent increase every year instead of every five years, as was done under the old.
Good job.
Good job. Anybody else? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Six, motion approved in resolution twenty twenty-five dash thirty-six.
A resolution authorizing and approving the three-year term purchase agreement with OpenGov Inc. for Cartograph Services to track maintenance and related costs through asset work orders in the amount of one hundred and twenty-nine thousand, four hundred and thirteen dollars and fifty-nine cents, of which costs will be spread out during the three-year term.
Present.
Second.
Motion and a second. You're up.
So Public Works and Parks Department both use Cartograph, which is a computerized system to keep track of all our assets. So for us, we keep track of our trucks, we can keep track of all the water lines, parts, and so when you go into GIS and you see the map that's showing all the parts, all that relates back and comes from databases we have in Cartograph. We also track all the maintenance to all our vehicles. We have the monthly reports that we give to finance to tell each department, here's how much money we spent maintaining your vehicles, so we can charge the other departments for the work that we do for them. So this is a, this is our basic asset management program that keeps track of all the city assets. It got bought out last year by OpenGov, and that's why it's a contract now with OpenGov to handle this. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Any questions? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Consent agenda, one motion, all in favor to approve recommendations noted. Any member of the council may ask for an item to be taken from the consent agenda for discussion on separate action. Present.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Communication from city council. Councilmember Johnson.
I just want to thank staff again for all their help and support in putting together a project for the Belton Main Street Coalition. We had a presentation today, and everything, I think, went very smoothly, and their help and assistance is much appreciated.
Councilmember McCallum.
I have a funny question for the Arts Committee. That mural is fantastic, the one and only that we have now, and I don't want to overshadow that, but I did, there has been, I've seen a couple of questions on asking why the train numbers on the mural differ from the train that is currently in downtown. I was wondering if there's a, we I was wondering if there's a, we know a history behind that, or any rhyme or reason behind that.
I am not a train expert, and I will fully admit and be transparent. I didn't know that there was a specific number assigned to a city, and so.
It's not assigned to a city, it's just the train itself has a number on the side of it. And the mural represents that, but the numbers do not match. They're not the same as the train that, numbers that currently sit right over there.
We do have an official train expert in there.
We have three numbers on engines. We have two steam engines that, that don't run, and we have an active number, so we could change that to, you know, the engine that runs, or the two that are just sitting there that don't run, so if that's something that you're interested in.
Okay, great.
I, I think it was just a general try to understand why there is a discrepancy, if it was a creative artistic change, or if there was maybe some actual history reason behind it. That was, I think, the question.
I don't know right off the top of my head what number was used in the mural.
I could, I have, I could get it. Okay, we could talk. I just had that general question, and I just thought maybe there might be an easy answer. Obviously, that is not the case, so, okay, we can.
Well, we weren't consulted, so there you go. So, we could fix that. I'm going to give you the numbers.
It was a commissioned art project, and art by nature is going to have fewer restrictions and guidelines than many other things.
Oh, I'm not saying there should have been guidelines, for the record. I agree. I was just trying to, I was just curious. It's not just, I shouldn't say me. The question posed was a curiosity of why is there a difference? Is it artistic, or is it something more?
It's artistic liberty.
We say it's artistic liberty at this point.
They have the wrong military aircraft, too, but I'm not complaining.
I remember that discussion, too. Well, to say you're not complaining, Zola, you said something, just say it. Okay, so that was all I had from me. I do have a couple of updates from the TDD board. I just, actually, there's not much to update there. The board did meet in April. Wasn't much to discuss, other than, you know, currently kind of between projects as we work to, as you know, the next project being the North Cass Parkway. From a parks perspective, Parks and Rec perspective, the junior, I've said, I think I've said, I think I've said all these, but just in case I haven't. Junior Craft Show at High Blue on May tenth. It will be very interesting, at least I think, because the vendors themselves will be from eight years old to eighteen years old. And so it will be interesting to see the interesting things that will be available. Kerry Nation Days, as a reminder, May thirtieth and thirty-first, and then the kids' fishing derby is on May seventeenth. And of course, everything else, if you have any questions, you can always reach out to the front desk at High Blue. And, you know, they try to keep things pretty updated on their website and Facebook, so. Other than that, I am all set.
To the mural at the, with the train, we are going to have a presentation with her. I think that's still up in the air, isn't it? We're waiting on her. We had, we had a date, and she wasn't able to make it, so the date's up in the air. But she will be there, and you can ask her that question, so.
There we go.
Anybody that wants to come, when we get that date, it will be sent out on media, and we'll, we'll get that figured out, and you can ask her that question.
Okay, thank you.
The other thing I, I want to say is we had the youth forum at the high school with the kids, and we had, what, seven of us there? And, including Mike, and then, and it went great. I thought it went really good with the kids, letting them know that we actually care about what they think, so. I thought that was a really good thing to have, so. Looking forward to more of those. That's all I got.
Yeah, I'll piggyback off what councilmember Richardson, Richardson just said about the Belton Youth Commission meeting we had last week. A special thanks to Mike Eke and teachers Joni Harrell and Chandler White for kind of convening all of this. Hopefully, the students will be reaching out to all of us on their own in the coming weeks as an assignment, and that we can run with that and kind of feed their curiosity and see how we can help them feel heard and, and a part of this community in the ways they want, so. I'm really excited and appreciate everybody who could make it.
I would like to thank the street department for finishing Mill Street. I now have a shortcut to get to these meetings, so I appreciate it. And if everyone's familiar with One-on-One the Fox, they gave the mayor some love today, so go to their site and like and follow them. They're promising us a Belton song, and something about the mayor's going to sing it once it's complete.
No, that ain't happening.
Yes.
I, I might be misquoting, go to the facts, but follow One-on-One the Fox. They've been around forever. They're a great station, and we appreciate the support.
I'm going to repeat the youth commission. It was very useful, very helpful. And also, I've noticed the signage of the city Wallace Park, which is a little confusing on Sonic, but they look good. Happy to see them out.
Well, I'm going to echo what Patty said. We had an awesome presentation to Missouri Main Street today. We were well represented by business owners and city officials. We walked them up and down Main Street. We talked to most vendors. The superintendent of schools was here. Chief Lyons was here. I'm not going to mention that the fire department didn't check their email in time. But, but we had a really good representation of, of our community. Dr. Underwood was very happy to hear about the youth council. We mentioned that the youth didn't know much about Main Street, and he wants to make sure that that doesn't happen anymore. He was, he's very concerned about them knowing what Main Street is. It went really, really well, and we should, we should hear something soon from them. And no, but I had a chance to make it, so.
Don't give him no excuse. Go ahead.
The homeless committee will meet Thursday. They are in the midst of doing a survey, and so we need to get some more, but that process will continue. I think it's happening through Free Hot Soup. And so hopefully we'll continue that, and hold on because in, in May, we'll announce another Ward Four meeting, so I know that's exciting to everyone. And so that's all I have.
All right. I got, I went to the coalition meeting today. It was excellent. I thought it got kicked off on a good start, so more power to that. I did go to One-on-One Fox today, and it was kind of interesting because it's in a office building in Corporate Woods, and just wouldn't think the whole floor was all radio stations, so it was kind of interesting, so. Look more, look, look for more on that. Went to the youth forum, and that was excellent. What I, what I picked out of it was the different perspective the younger generation has, and that's kind of interesting still. I wanted to mention the wayfinding signs. Everybody's talked about everything I've got on my list. But I think they look great, and I think they'll, they'll do good. The only other thing I got next week, we're doing, our next meeting, we're doing pictures. Is that still correct? Let's wear shirts like this, so. That's all I got.
What? What am I going to get? You got like.
So, not this color, just wear your shirt. I don't care what color it is, so. That's all I got. City manager?
I don't have anything this evening.
All right. Item, items for review and discussion. Item number one is going to be postponed to a later date. Item two, emergency management plan.
Hello again. Let's see. They gave me directions to get a dark. They said I was down here. Am I hitting the wrong button?
The podium?
I did.
While we're checking, pull your cell phones away from the microphones.
Sam.
I got it.
Mine's way over here.
Right next to that one.
Good evening again. This was just going to be an opportunity for me to provide an update on emergency management. I'm going to walk through kind of our department's vision, our current initiatives, and provide a strategic roadmap through twenty twenty-seven about plans that we would like to accomplish. To start off, I established mission, vision, and values for our department. Our vision is to be resilient, have a resilient and a prepared Belton where everyone can play a role in the safety, and that we are committed to protecting lives and property through preparedness, collaboration, and innovative solutions. Our values added on to what the city already holds as their values. We have preparedness, collaboration, integrity, compassion, resilience, and innovation. This is an overview of five initiatives that I've identified that I would like to either roll out or develop over the next three years. Community Emergency Response Team, or CERT. We'll talk a little more about all of these. Belton Ready, Business Continuity and Resiliency in Resilient Neighborhoods, and School and Youth Preparedness Programs. The, sorry. CERT, the goal of that is to enhance local response capacity by training community members as emergency volunteers, kind of what we talked about earlier. Having regular training sessions, certifying volunteers, and course disaster response skills. Having a communication network for volunteers during emergencies, and then being able to coordinate annual drills to keep them engaged and ready. Belton Ready is a community awareness campaign, heavy on social media. Kind of where it will start to roll out, but also within the community, having a slogan of hashtag Belton Ready, sharing safety guides and kits, and having workshops with local businesses collaborating for outreach efforts. Different workshops throughout the years, through different quarters, where we invite the community to become better prepared. So we have started the rollout with that lately on social media, but then we also will have some handouts at the next, like upcoming community events, as well as flyers that we are going to post around the city, encouraging folks to sign up to receive emergency management updates, and also sign up for mass notifications for when there are emergencies. Business Continuity and Resiliency, the goal for that is to equip local businesses with resources and plans needed to continue their operations during and after a disaster. This one will be focused directly towards the chamber and the Belton Main Street and the different businesses and organizations in our community. Be able to provide a resource for them to develop business continuity plans, have quarterly workshops that are going to be more geared towards those business owners. And then being, have, being able to create that mutual aid network among local businesses to support each other in times of disruption. And Resilient Neighborhoods will take us to the neighborhoods, where we want to strengthen the community bonds, prepare neighborhoods for localized emergency response. We will identify neighborhood leaders to serve as those preparedness liaisons. There have been steps already. I've had a couple come to my office and have the conversation about what they can do to help with the emergency management goals. Also, being able to help them conduct neighborhood-level assessments to identify vulnerabilities and resources that we have within our community. And then being able to provide resources, neighbor to neighbor, as they create shared emergency kits, kind of intertwines with all of the other initiatives taking place. Yes.
Maybe a Matt question, but because we're rethinking Code Advisory Committee, is that something that we could work kind of hand in hand with? You know, because we're trying, we're trying to do, we want to look at, focus more on neighborhoods and neighborhood togetherness.
Yeah, that could be a component of that.
Yeah, I mean, because that, that is one of the things that we're thinking about now for that particular committee, that that may be something that we want to work together on.
Yeah, and pretty sure, like, all five of these programs involve a lot of collaboration with other city departments, as well as other city organizations, the school district, especially for this school and youth preparedness program. So, yeah, any groups that want to kind of help achieve any of these would be welcomed. The school and youth preparedness program.
Sorry, real quick on that same topic of, I'll just say that one of the things that I feel like I see a lot of is questions about resources available in emergencies, so things like tornado shelters and that kind of thing, where they're located, and I'll be honest, I don't know where they all are myself, and I, I do have a list that was actually provided by our, our chief of police that I often refer to, but it's that type of thing that I agree is very needed, that I probably hear the most of, so.
Absolutely, yeah, no. I do know we have the, the FEMA-rated shelter that we have in our community is in the Belton High School. But there are some other non-FEMA-rated shelters throughout different neighborhoods, but that would be kind of a part of all of these processes, is to identify those types of locations and be able to also take that information. It also allows us to look for different kinds of grant funding that are directly related to mitigation efforts, building, improving infrastructure, building better storm shelters in the area when they're identified as needed. School and Youth Preparedness Program. The goal of that one is to educate youth and school staff on preparedness skills and emergency response, response procedures. Long-term goal there is to introduce a K through twelve curriculum on emergency preparedness basics. This would just be as simple as, you know, what to do in storms, how do you stay safe for those younger grades, all the way up to looking into potentially like teen volunteer programs where they can come and help and be part of disaster response, or, you know, get introduced to emergency management, fire, police, and the different emergency services. Have annual preparedness drills alongside with the school. I do know they have a school district-wide tornado drill scheduled for September that I've had on my calendar, and so doing more of those things, making sure that they are practicing their plans, or if they need plans updated.
One more thing with the youth council, we talked about having an open communication
Yes.
with the school now, so that, you know, whether it's a, you know, a weekly thing or a monthly thing, but that is something that certainly you could avail yourself to when we get it up and going.
Yeah, absolutely.
I mean, because we want to talk about, you know, arts and safety and, you know, everything.
Yeah.
And they're, they're very willing to hear from us and, and us to hear from them.
Yeah, and just to have people that can champion these different ideas into the schools would be fantastic.
Have you had conversations with the school about, specifically before this gets actually started, how the procedure is, because it's the one place that the citizens can go to? But do they, are they going to have to go through the whole check-in process so they know who's there and all that stuff? Because it took us twenty-five minutes to get us all seven checked in, and I'd hate to see three hundred people standing in line to get checked in.
For an emergency?
For the shelter.
They don't.
No, and the entrance is on the backside of the school there.
Southwest corner.
Mm-hmm. And there, there is some signage there. You've got to kind of look for it, but, yeah, there's access to that. You don't have to go through the process.
I just wanted to hear that so that it could be on the recording.
Yeah. So this is just a general overview of the timeline, kind of what I'm looking at. Twenty twenty-five is going to be the year for laying the foundation for these initiatives, these programs, and the early stages in those planning. CERT, the resolution tonight kind of gives us that running start to get that thing rolling. Belton Ready, we're just working on planning resource allocation. The business continuity is doing those partnerships and then funding, if necessary, identifying neighborhood leaders and assess what the resources are, and then establishing those partnerships with schools and stakeholders, and those have all been started since I've gotten here. I've been trying to kind of build those partnerships, identify the key players in all of these. Twenty twenty-six is where bulk of the programs are going to roll out and start to really be relevant or be seen. That's when we'll have regular training, establishing communication networks for CERT. We'll have those themed campaigns, and hopefully in twenty twenty-six, host like pilot workshops of, you know, build a kit, come help build a preparedness kit, get it started. Business continuity, launching those planning toolkits. Like to get our website updated on the emergency management side as resources are provided for businesses to go on and find those. And then working on emergency plans, and then developing those materials and pilot, piloting a preparedness drill. In twenty twenty-seven, hopefully, by then, everything will be established. We'll move into the integration and sustainability part of these, where we will evaluate effectiveness of the programs, make changes that are necessary, and identify anything that needs to be changed, or what's continuing and is successful. And then we just continue kind of on that process. That's what I have. Any questions?
Any questions?
Well, I've, I've got just a general comment, which is, this is clearly upping and making a better emergency preparedness plan than, than I, than we had previously. And that's exactly what we're looking for from you and your role, and I just want to say thank you for doing that. You are increasing the level for Belton, and it's something that is going to be great for not only everyone that lives here, but also visits, right?
So, you know, thank you for sharing this. It's good that we get this out there visibly, not only to us, but just to everybody, so. Thank you.
Go ahead.
Just want to say thank you, too.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Redevelopment, number three, redevelopment at sixteen forty-five North Scott Avenue, Quick Stop.
Yep, at the at your seats, I did provide a handout of the locations of the projects that I'm going to talk about for the work session. The Quick Stop gas station, there's a final plat that will be coming forward to city council at the next meeting on May thirteenth for the redevelopment at sixteen forty-five North Scott, which is the former Domino's site at the southeast corner of one hundred and fifty-fifth and North Scott. The Planning Commission approved a preliminary plat and a final development plan at their meeting last night for a four thousand square foot convenience store and an eight-pump gas station. And the final plat approval will allow building permits to be issued for that redevelopment project.
Any questions? Go ahead.
All right, help me understand what this little thing is across the street.
So that is a remnant piece of property that is tied to this tied to this property. None of their title works show that 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 was ever dedicated officially as right-of-way. And so there is. There are easements on there that will be dedicated with this. It's going to be dedicated as a separate tract and not a lot, which basically means it's not a buildable lot. So they can't do anything with it. It's it's something that potentially would need to be acquired at a later date if there's ever any infrastructure projects needed there, but it is not a buildable lot and will not be able to be developed.
Would they be responsible for mowing it, maintaining it, whatever?
Yes, but I'm not sure if that's something that that is already being maintained by the city as part of the water, the infrastructure that's there. So I think we might already be maintaining that as it is.
I would. I would assume we are, because I'm assuming the current tenant, which is not there, is not maintaining it.
We maintain that.
Okay.
Probably three swipes of a lawnmower, yeah.
And we actually, just so you know, we actually go all the way down around the corner, and all that is mowed by the city, even though it's in Kansas City.
Anybody else?
It looks nice.
Go ahead.
I said it looks nice.
Better than what's standing there. All right, item four, Commons of Belton Project.
On the other, on the backside of this page is the details on the site plan for the Commons of Belton Project. There will be a public hearing next Tuesday, May sixth, by the Planning Commission to review the rezoning and the preliminary development plan for this request, which includes a two hundred and fifty-two unit apartment complex at the southwest corner of Westover and Bong Avenue. Due to the interest in this project, we are working to get the Planning Commission agenda packet out early, hopefully by the end of the day tomorrow, to allow for additional time to review the project, including the staff report and the project plans. If the Planning Commission makes a recommendation next week, the rezoning and preliminary development plan is scheduled for the May twenty-seventh city council meeting.
So citizens wanted to say their piece. The meeting was when again?
It is next Tuesday, May sixth, at six o'clock.
At this location?
Correct.
Thank you. Anybody else?
And I also will mention that if citizens are not able to attend, they can also send an email to planning@belton.org with any of their support or opposition to the project, and we will provide those emails in advance of the Planning Commission meeting.
Similar but not the same. Would. Is there any way the residents can use the Belton app to potentially submit a interest, or no? No, I'm seeing head shake. No, okay.
Yeah, it would be easier to send it directly to community development for us to be able to provide that information.
Yeah, and that makes sense, right, to use that email. I get what you're saying. I was just thinking of maybe another way in which we could promote the app. That was really where I was thinking.
Anybody else? Hearing none. I didn't entertain a motion entered executive session to discuss matters pertaining to legal actions according to Missouri State Statute six ten point zero two one point one, pertaining to the leasing and purchase sale of real estate according to Missouri State Statute six ten point zero two one point two, pertaining negotiated contracts according to Missouri State Statute six ten point zero two one point one two, and the record be closed in the meeting adjourned from there. Present.
Second.
A motion is second. Any discussion? Hearing none. Roll call.
Mayor Larky?
Yes.
Councilmember White?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Davidson?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Lawson?
Hi.
Richardson?
Hi.
McCallum?
Hi.
Johnson?
Hi.
Motion passes.